...number 50, Mahoney County officials, the order with everyone please stand. I'd like to say this is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Good morning. Didn't expect to see so many wide awake people three days after Christmas. So it's a good one. Public comments. Start the meeting if anyone has anything they'd like to address the board with. Ask you to talk to the podium. Give them three minutes. Mike?
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Last month you signed an agreement with Republican Services.
Mike, for the record, we need you to give your name and address.
My name is Mike Pettard, Division Manager of Carbon Limestone Landfill 8100, South State Line Road, Lowellville, Ohio.
Thank you.
4436. So last month you signed an agreement with us, which will go for 50 to 100 years. And as part of that, I agree with you-
Carol will be the only one here then. She'll have the- she'll-
Carol.
It'll be me here, Mike.
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Yes.
That's okay, though.
I'll be buried here.
We'll be right here in the same location.
So anyway, as part of that agreement, I delivered a check to Poland Village for $5,000 earlier in December.
Wow.
And I come to you today to give you a check for $10,000 for what I had in that team. This is the first of many. This $10,000 will be paid for the next 50 to 100 years. As long as the landfill operates, you'll get the $10,000. Every week, every month, every year.
Come on, see, you guys-
Every month.
I give you some money and you want it, sure.
Very much. I love you guys. Give it to Anna.
Yeah, Anna.
Come on, Anna.
Anna, we need to get a picture of you and Anna.
Yes, thank you.
Representative Char.
Hey, good deal, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Welcome.
Thank you for working.
It's always nice when you come bearing gifts out of the county.
It seems that's all I ever come here, right?
They call them Santa Claus for a reason.
Well, that's a good thing, you know, there's Christmas cheer. All right, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing that, we'll move on to approval of previous minutes of Board meeting number 49, Thursday, December 14, 2017, and approval of bills for Pam.
So move.
Second.
Go call.
Commissioner Midio again.
Yes.
Commissioner Taffetansy.
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzel.
Yes.
Motion approved, Journal entry number one.
Second.
Go call.
Commissioner Midio again.
Yes.
Commissioner Taffetansy.
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzel.
Yes. Engineers.
Good morning, everybody. Letter A is the 2018 annual travels for the Engineers' Office to attend various conferences, seminars, trainings, ever-acquired continuing education for licensed professionals.
Right, thank you, Patrick. Lead based, Philip.
Congratulations for a travel for, travel within Ohio and Pennsylvania for looking hard at meetings, training, and such.
All right. Auditors.
No, it's agreed.
Hold on. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Hold the Moses.
Great.
All right. You have the travels.
Motion approved, travels, letters A through-
Second.
Go call.
Commissioner Midio again.
Yes.
Commissioner Taffetansy.
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzel.
Yes. All right, now agreements. Auditors.
We're here with the State of Ohio, on their completion of basic days financial statements for three years, the amount of $30,000 per year.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Book of Lords.
Good morning, Commissioners Nancy. It's a request for professional services with Barbara Soren, and basically she's going to provide project management services in relation to our Tiberia e-filing system. It's an amount of $18,000. And when the purchase order is increased next year, it will be non-general funds. It will be from a court technology account, those funds will be paid.
Convention and visitors, C through H.
Good morning. Lining up things for 2018. Letter C is in agreement with Miles Meteor Group, who handles our literature distribution at the rest stops on the Pennsylvania Turnpike leading here to Ohio. Letter D is advertising with E-Tour Magazine. Letter E is our advertising agreement with Meredith Corporation, which publishes Midwest Living, or Best of the Midwest. Letter F is for Auto Club Group Publishing Alliance, which is the arrival of AAA Publications, for those people looking for road trips. And letter G is with Emerald Magazine, Guest Quest, a lot of online advertising there. And finally, letter H is with HHR Publishing, Crossing Magazine, which is a Canadian publication that reaches our neighbors to the north.
Canadian. All right, data.
Yeah, this was for, in a room with like, what, like business products for the annual software insurance, and maybe it's for our software, mobile search product, and that's about $8,680. That is non-general.
All right, thank you. Engineers.
Commissioners, letter J is in agreement with Thomas Book and Associates for some engineering design services on the final phase of Meridian Road, which goes from I-680 north to the county line. It's federally funded, and it's a joint project with us and the city of Youngstown. Letter K is in agreement with Concord Road Equipment for repairs to one of our vehicles, and that is non-general funds.
Thanks, Pat. Lead based, Phil.
Letter L is in agreement with residents in for relocation of families as they're doing that, or in their homes. Letter M is an actual, that has control projects, very small, but okay.
Good morning, Commissioners, Nancy. N is in agreement with N-Met LLC for repair and maintenance on a hazmat CAD equipment service, and that's for $1,400, non-general. Letter O is a memorandum of understanding between the Sheriff's Office and the Mahoney County Mental Health Recovery Board for services to provide inmates. And this is a MOU that will extend through to the end of Jerry's term, or one month after Jerry's term should cease. And we're recording that today with the Commissioner's Office. And in addition to that, this gives access to the inmates, to all levels of assistance through the Mental Health Recovery Board, through agreements that they already have. So it's really great partnership between the Sheriff and the Mental Health Board. And then the letter P is an addendum to that MOU to identify additional services specifically being paid by the Treatment Alternatives Program grant that we got this year, that will last two years.
Okay, great, thanks. Recycle.
Hi, good morning. This is a non-general funds with an agreement with YSU, and it's focused mainly on materials exchange. This is our industrial waste conversion strategy of the state solid waste plan.
All right, thank you. Agreements.
Motion approved, agreements, A through Q.
Second.
Go call.
Commissioner Midio again.
Yes.
Commissioner Taffetansy.
Yes. Yes. Exchange orders. Dog's order.
Good morning, everyone. We're closing out the dog shelter project, and this is a detox. When they originally were demoing a house that was previously on the site, they determined they didn't have to remove much of the foundation or footing, so we have a deduct of $3,000.
Thanks, John. Engineers.
Commissioners, letter P is change order number one, a final, with RT Vernal paving for the 2017 PWC resurfacing Hitchcock Road, Culver, and Calo Road Culver replacements, which resulted in an increase in amount.
Excellent. Lead based.
Change order for unforeseen item, W-DW construction at the sidewalk project.
Next one. ONB grants.
Commissioners, this is a decrease in the amount of $5,338 for contract recovery terrariums for the Coatesville lighting and sidewalk project. This was a partnership between the county engineers, ODOT funding, and CWDG.
Excellent. Change orders.
Motion approved, change orders, A through B.
Second.
Go call.
Commissioner Midio again.
Yes.
Commissioner Taffetansy.
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzel.
Yes. Appointments. Commissioners, want to follow individual, sir, out of Mahoney County Convention and Visitors' Bureau, effective January 1, 2018, for a two-year term. Ray Mancini, Bongo Mancini, is going to be a new appointment on the Convention and Visitors. Does an excellent, will do an excellent job. All right, motion for appointments.
Motion approved, appointments, 5A.
Second.
Go call.
Commissioner Midio again.
Yes.
Commissioner Taffetansy.
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzel.
Yes. Resolutions.
Motion to approve resolutions, number one additions.
Second.
On the sign.
Well- Okay, Phil, this is the end of the year.
Commissioner Midio again.
Yes.
Commissioner Taffetansy.
Yes. Yes. Record of bids, purchasing.
Two proposals were received, one from Modern Office Supply, one from Staples.
Do we get one of those easy buttons?
I have one. I might lend it to you.
We need one of those easy buttons.
All right, I'll give you.
I have one that says something different on it.
That's okay.
All right. Record of bids.
Motion approved, record of bids, 2A.
Go call. Go back. Second.
Second.
Go call.
Commissioner Midio again.
Yes.
Commissioner Taffetansy.
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzel.
Yes. Resolution of awards. Engineers, you're a busy man today, Patrick. John is here.
Commissioners, letter A is the award of the Mahoney County Causeway Project to Virtue Gaffney Excavating, the amount $161,349. Ninety, eighty percent federally funded. Virtue Gaffney was a low bid. Letter B is the award of the purchase pickup and delivery, number nine limestone aggregate from East Fairfield Company, I'm sorry, East Fairfield Coal Company, the amount of $100,000. This is non-general funds as well.
All right, thank you, Patrick. Resolution of awards.
Motion approved, resolution of awards, A and B.
Second.
Go call.
Commissioner Midio again.
Yes.
Commissioner Taffetansy.
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzel.
Yes. Resolutions. A, Commissioners, resolution approving the appointment of Mahoney County Prosecutor Paul J. Gaines as the Law Director for Boardman Township pursuant to the RRC Section 504.15. That's because they're a homegrown township, and they have to have a, they have to have a law director, and so that's who they choose, the prosecutor, so it's a wonderful. B, Commissioners, ONB, C.
Commissioners, this is a resolution, we'll do yearly for cash advances at the end of the year, where we have grants, there's Joey, other money coming in, those monies come back to, it comes from the general fund, and then back into the general fund at the beginning of the year. We just do a amount not to exceed, I don't expect it to be that high, but it gives us a window so the auditor can process those entries. Item C is for our Bond Council, that with Squires, Patton and Bug, for 2018. And then item D is agreement that the Commissioners have as part of the membership with the JOAT, which is the Joint Office of Economic Development. This is a withdrawal from that membership, and you have to give a six-month notification, so that's why it's effective June 30 of 2018, and we have to pay a pro-ation. Item E is the agreement we have with the COG, that Commissioners provide support to the COG, and this is item E for this year, and what was approved by the Board for the COG, and requesting you guys are approving it, Boardman and Austin County, to also appoint a committee.
All right, thank you. Engineers, we should just stay up.
No, I should have. It's like dated church.
Letter F is resolution of necessity to purchase equipment packages from Henderson Products
under NJPA. These are snow and ice packages for the tandem and single axle trucks.
Facilities purchasing.
These are blanket deals for goods and services through cooperative purchasing, and maybe plus to achieve economy scale, legal protection, eliminates duplication of requisition, purchase orders, invoices, and expedite the whole process when there's a need for a good or a service.
Did you repeat that, Jim? Facilities purchasing on H, is that included in that?
No, unfortunately. We had a heating water supply pipe burst, and towel support wing, and required immediate dust.
Well, breaks first, though.
You're having a bad moment if you saw that.
Human resources.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Nancy. This is a resolution approving the memorandum of understanding with the various unions here at the county to accept the health care plan for 2018.
Good deal. Thank you. ONB grants, EMA.
Commissioners, this is an agreement with the State of Ohio to provide services to our Marx radios at EMA. We have four radios, and it'll be a total of $480 a year for that service.
First second.
We're requesting that the proposals that were received for office supplies be rejected. Can you give you a little background? The proposal we received, Modern Office, who are current contract, was a 51.1% discount. They lowered it to 45%. Staples came in at 55% with greater discount. With moving over to cooperative purchasing, we go up to a 68% discount overall, plus rebates. When you're looking at our bid, county has approximately 45 units that participate, 400,000. But cooperative purchasing, there's 7,000 participants, 300 million spent with that purchasing program. So unfortunately, I tried for the local guys, between Amazon and a big box, it's hard to compete. Since I've been in this purchasing, I know of six office supply companies in Mahoney County that are no other existence. But we did give a try, it's just too far to spread, too much of a discount.
Okay. Thanks, Jim. Is that a cover?
I would be a blanket deal for everyone then to participate in cooperative purchasing. And if Commissioners do approve, Meg and I will be sending out an email to the department, and we're going to have an in-service and make sure everyone gets their easy button.
All right, Jim. Thank you. All right.
Motion to approve resolutions, A through L.
Second.
Go call.
Commissioner Midio again.
Yes.
Commissioner Taffetansy.
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzel.
Yes. All right. Call for the good of your cat, you know, since how you're used to standing up, sitting down, just like you're going through mass, you might as well stand back up and give us something good to say.
Thank you.
Well, there's a nasty flu going around, so take care of yourselves. Winter has arrived. Be safe out there, make sure you bring your animals in, and just wish everybody a happy New Year. That's all.
Thank you.
That's true. Everybody's got, everybody has, it's like it's a present from Christmas, everybody got a collar.
Anybody else? Nothing good to say?
I grew up in Erie, and I'm glad I'm a youngster.
That's a wonderful thing. Now, if you deny your allegiance to the communist nation, and disregard that Pittsburgh Steelers will accept you.
Now, they're all, oh, I'm out of Pittsburgh Dealer friends.
I like that. I like that. You're accepted. Audrey.
Karen said, "Hmm." I just want to say, let everyone know that the new revenue bond for the sanitary closed today, and the responsible coming in, so there's been some tab, and sanitary bill, and other documents, Commissioners, in that process, we were able to rewrite the trust agreement, and with our Bond Council, and everything, and get things cleaned up, and actually do a little bit of saving, so it's a good thing those revenues are coming in, and the old bonds will be paid out tomorrow. And with the old ones here.
Wonderful thing. Lot of work to get to this point. You know, I'll tell you, Pat's office-
Yes, definitely.
And everybody involved did a great job.
Yeah.
And we'll give Pat a little credit, too.
Yes, definitely.
Not too much, a little bit. Anybody else? Carol.
Well, you know, I just want to wish, before I get into something that I think is really important, I told Audrey, I just have to tell everybody, because this is kind of multiplying, and you guys know about the veterans, the veterans, female veterans housing, that we have been working on. Tim, you were there as the union representative to go through the building with our partners on this, which is the federal government, the state, some locals, the Veterans Administration, our office, Audrey and Jimmy have done a lot of work on this, to let you guys know, and you already have, keep you abreast of what we're doing there. I am so excited about this, because I just don't think there's enough of help, I'll put it that way, that's given to female veterans, that have the same issues as the male veterans. And to have some transitional housing in Oak Hill, which is set up for hospital, and the rooms are there, and to try to see if we can make this fit, and have the money to do this through grants, and from the federal government, the state, and different agencies that can help us, Veteran Services, to help the veterans, female veterans, with the same things that the men have, and keep them separated from the male veterans. I believe there's only, what, one other housing area, and that's Summit County, or Cleveland has that, and there's only, what, 10 beds? I think there's either eight to 10 beds, and that's it. So hopefully, this will work at our building, at Oak Hill, and Jennifer Bond, and of course, you know Jennifer, she's one of the commanders, I believe, with the Veterans Association, and the MamVets, and so she's helping with that as well. And those of you here that are veterans, of course, you understand the different areas of which the females have had problems in the military, and they have families just like the men do, and some are single mothers, and so we're going to try to help them do this. I think with the help of Anthony and Dave, it's a great project. It is probably one of the better projects, I mean, of course, we've had so many excellent things this year, but this project hits home, because you have women with children that really don't have anywhere to go. If you look at TV and you see the rescue mission, and how they're adding beds on top of that, you'll see probably in there some of the females, of course, we added two house tops and that as well. But, so this going forward for next year, we've had ongoing meetings, we've had meetings with the architect to find out costs, and Jimmy and Audrey will fill in on more of that after we get through the next couple of meetings. I'm excited about this, and I know my two colleagues are excited. Tim, you were excited about it as well when you were there. I mean, I got to say one thing about our unions, and they're represented here, when we put Purple Cat together, that is a nonprofit, helping out young people, and people that are not like we are, to have jobs and sustain themselves and live in an environment that we take for granted, I think. And they all helped on that. And Gallagher, and I think Marty, you were Tim that told me about Gallagher, why don't you tell them about the Gallagher, the reason you guys were a part of doing that?
Tim Gallagher was a, he was an inspector up in Trouble County, actually. His dad was an electrician, and that would have been, his dad's brother was Joey Gallagher, who was named after Gallagher, his lunchbox is named after. So it does come circle with some of the building trades, the participation with it.
And you guys did a lot of work, all of you tradesmen, did volunteer work to help that kitchen get to where it is, and I say that everywhere I go. That is an accomplishment that we did, that is probably, I mean, in no disrespect, anything else that goes on in this county, because we've done a lot of great things in the year, and I'm sure Anthony and Dave will fill in on that, but these things that we could do to help people, it's just the greatest thing in the world, and I'll shut up about it, but I kept you on the court, and you're part of the committee now. The trade is part of the committee. So now that you're all here, I can say that. Right?
Absolutely.
Okay, cool, Bill. Anyway, I just want to wish everybody a very happy, a very merry, Merry Christmas is over, but a happy New Year. Be healthy, stay safe, and keep God in prayer for the New Year, and for healthy and happiness throughout the New Year. We'll have a good year, I think. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
That's most, Bill.
I'd just like to, you know, echo what Carol said, I mean, the Oak Hill facility is a perfect fit for female veterans, and we already have one of the most state-of-the-art office places up there right now for our veterans. So with the other wraparound agencies that female veterans can utilize, everything's under one roof, it's a one-stop shop. The federal government, I think, would be pleased with the aesthetics of what the Oak Hill Center has to offer. As Carol alluded to earlier, there is federal money that comes through the Department of Veterans Affairs. I worked down in Washington for 11 years, and realized what their budget is, and hopefully the administration will recognize the effect that we have communities like ours, who want to assist and offer those types of spaces for our female veterans. So I have to credit Carol, she put a lot of work behind this, and Dave, and the Commissioners, and everyone here in the room, to make sure, see if this is a fit for us, and I hope it is. I want to thank everyone and wish everyone a happy New Year. You know, this year was a great year. Mahoney County is in the forefront of a lot of accomplishments, not only fiscally, budgetarily, but we've done a lot of infrastructure improvements with Pat's office, with the sanitary, you know, the new dog shelter courthouse restoration, we did work on the jail, we did elevators, we did boilers, we did air conditioners, you know, keeping what we have functioning right for our people. And I thank the employees, they put a lot of hours in, a lot of hard work, and the county making us all look good, and our staff and everybody. So I just want to say, thank you, we had a great year.
We did.
Stay healthy, and looking forward to 2018, and I see better things on the horizon for Mahoney County. So I look forward to serving with my two colleagues, who I have much admiration and respect for in the New Year, and happy New Year to all your families. Thank you.
Well, the last meeting of the year, hard to believe it's gone already, you know, break through, was through, you know, and Nancy and Carol here, you know, they, they not only beat me and Anthony on a regular basis, their poor husbands are both recovering from surgeries, you know, they're, you know, so we're looking for a healthier 2018, and maybe these women will laugh.
Will give us a break.
Both of Aunt, me and Anthony are getting over a cold, because Carol and Nancy made a squat in the cold, shovel the sidewalks, so they can walk over here this morning. So we're recovering, their husbands are recovering, we're glad to see Frank got his shoulder replaced, and Mike got his hip replaced, and, you know, jeez, oh man, these poor guys have been carrying these ladies around. They're breaking down, they're breaking down, and it's good to see that they're doing all right, and they're on a heal. So Anthony and I, we got a couple bottles of Crown Oil for Christmas presents, I think that's the only salvation that we have. But anyway, it's, no, it really has been a great year, and I'm thankful to have been able to serve with not only Carol and Anthony, but all the employees, and all the great job that they did in the county on behalf of all of us, and, you know, we see, you know, Tim and Marty, Rocky, and guys- You know, we see Tim and Marty, Rocky, the guys here from Leybridge, do a great job on behalf of the county, and, you know, just so many people that have worked so hard. I also want to say that I had the privilege yesterday of going over to visit Marcela Walter, one of our deputies that donated her kidney to her fellow officer, and she's doing great, and it was just heartwarming to sit down and talk to somebody who has gone through all that, you know, I mean, that's, you know, a major surgery that she voluntarily did to save the life of one of her fellow officers, but another human being that has done a great job, and I know that Sheriff Bean came here and, you know, talked about it, and, you know, as well as Pat, who lived it, and so many different things, and how difficult that scenario is, and it was just really nice to sit down and see her, and be able to be part of, you know, just to discuss with her and see her improving daily. Said she's still taking some naps on a regular basis, but she's feeling great, she looked great, and looked healthy as, healthy as could be, so it was a wonderful thing. Those are the people that really warm your heart in holiday seasons, that really should be looked at as our heroes, you know, doing things like that. We also, Anthony and Carol and I got to participate, not participate, but witnessed Carla Baldwin being sworn in yesterday as the judge of Youngstown Municipal Court. What a fantastic young lady she is, and, you know, what a background, what a family, you know, her education, her upbringing, just everything involved, it was just, you know, a wonderful person, well-prepared for the job she's taken, and I know she'll do an excellent job, and it was just very, very nice to sit and watch that, and, you know, it just, you know, it makes you go back to think about it, you know, when, you know, what a happy moment it is when you're getting elected, and, you know, being able to serve, and fulfilling a dream, and really seemed like that was her dream. So I think that she said, she wrote correctly, a letter, or an essay when she was in grade school.
Sixth grade.
Sixth grade, that she wanted, what she wanted to do, and, you know, her teacher told her, you know, plan your future, write down what you want to do in life, and that was what she wrote down, in sixth grade, you know, so.
She knew she wanted to do that.
Yeah, so fulfilling your dream, and, you know, being able to serve and help others was just amazing, so it was really, it was really a great event.
And then she was at, Judge Millich had his last veterans' court, and she sat on one of his, you know, on the dance with him, while he did his last veterans' graduation, and passed the pond to her, and she will continue that, which is like the greatest thing that started in the city when I was, when I was a constable. Yeah, to help, you know, the veterans, and so that is going to continue on with probably having their new offices over in their own building. So we've got a lot of good things going on in the city, we'll be all right.
That was the last thing I wanted to mention, was Judge Millich, wanted to congratulate him, you know, a lot of you do a great service for Mahoney County, the city of Youngstown, and for the veterans, who did a great job for a long time, and that she will continue his legacy, so it's all good things going on, a lot of good things happening, and we look forward to 2018, hopefully a happy and a healthy one.
Yes.
The women couldn't be beating us so much, so it's all good. Happy new year, stay safe. Have a blessed year. With that, our next meeting will be determined, when it is, we don't have it identified yet, but, you know, I think it will be on a Monday, a reorganizational meeting, and we'll keep you posted as to the exact time and date, but we have it out today, we'll note today when it is, so. Anyway, I wish you a happy new year. With that, that's for motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
Commissioner, maybe again, yes? Commissioner, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Yes, bring those animals in, please. Hey, Patrick O'Shaughnessy, I got a ticket for you.